We will now call a common council meeting of October 20th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the pledge? Chris, would you lead us tonight?
I'd like to lead.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to the minutes, I would ask that the city clerk read in the notice of video conferencing.
Certainly, the City of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting has been conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capabilities and was duly noted for the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation via direct mailing to property owners within 300 feet of proposal. This meeting may be also viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in all forementioned notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q&amp;A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one or more public hearings scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces the public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure above, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Catherine. That will get us to the approvals of minutes of October the 6th, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to look at them, please? And you're satisfied, there's no correction, errors, omissions? Motion, please.
Guzekowski will make a motion to accept the minutes from October 6th, 2020.
Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Steins.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay, item four gets us to our first public hearing of the night, and it is a consideration of a conditional use amendment for Mega Mart's, better known as Pick 'n Save, to allow outdoor displays. And this is for the parcel at 2320 West Ryan. Catherine, would you read that into record, please?
Certainly, public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Mega Mart's LLC doing business as Pick 'n Save number 387 for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow outdoor display of retail merchandise propane tank exchange on the property at 2320 West Ryan Road. The applicant is Mega Mart's LLC doing business as Pick 'n Save number 387. Property owner is Atut Real Estate LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is September 23rd, 2020.
Right, and with us tonight is Doug Seymour. Doug? Whoa, you're muted, Doug. We're not hearing you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek, and this is the first of three public hearings this evening. First is a conditional use amendment which would allow for the outdoor display of retail merchandise, specifically propane tanks, for the Pick 'n Save property at 2320 West Ryan Road. This property was issued a conditional use for the, actually for the veterinary clinic earlier. The CUP was last updated in 2011 for a nonrelated request. This kind of arose out of a situation, court enforcement situation, where there was outdoor storage taking place that was contacted, and they have since applied for a conditional use permit to allow for this. This is only for the outdoor display of a, the retail sales of propane. And as you can see from the slide, I hope you can see that, there's roughly an indication of where on the property in relation to the front door the propane cages would be. These are very typical. You see these in many places around the community and elsewhere. They allow for the customer drop off and pickup of replacement propane tanks. Other than that, no exterior site modifications are being proposed as part of this request. The Plan Commission has reviewed the request during the September 22nd meeting, and they have recommended approval, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. This is a public hearing. I would ask, now that anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit, if you're in the audience, to please approach the microphone, give your name and address to the common council if you are online with us this evening. Once you're recognized by the moderator, again, give us your name, address, and proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, we will make three calls. This will be the first, and I will check with Kevin. He is indicating there is nobody for the first call. This will be the second call.
No one for that call either.
Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak? We will need your name and address for the record.
Nobody for that call.
We'll now close the public hearing on item four and go to five, which is consideration of the ordinance for that conditional use permit amendment. I'll open it up to the council. Questions, comments? Nothing to my left. Rich? Steve? Greg, anything? You guys were planning?
Yeah, no, we pretty much, this one and the next one. I actually, with the huge help of Lori Miller, Lori, kudos to her for going out and getting this all nailed down, so that's it.
Yeah, a little bit of history on it. Mega Mart's was selling quite a bit of outdoor display things this spring, and it started to accumulate along the sidewalk against our current zoning issues. So the property owners did work, Mega Mart's did work with the city and came up with a workable solution to get back in compliance, so we appreciate that. Seeing nothing, motion on five then.
Guzekowski makes a motion to accept ordinance number 2985 approving a conditional use permit amendment for outdoor display and retail merchandise propane tank cage area at the entrance of the existing Pick 'n Save store on the property of 2320 West Ryan Road.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item six is considered as a public hearing for a conditional use amendment consideration for Pick 'n Save, for again, the allowance of outdoor display. This is for the property at 8770 South Howell. Catherine, if you would, please.
Certainly, public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Mega Mart's LLC doing business as Pick 'n Save number 862 for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow outdoor display of retail merchandise propane tank exchange on the property of 8770 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is Mega Mart's LLC doing business as Pick 'n Save number 862. Property owner is NDC LLC. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is September 23rd, 2020.
Catherine, Doug?
Thank you, Catherine. Again, as was the case with the prior public hearing, the applicant in this case is requesting approval for a proposed amendment to the existing PUP to allow for the outdoor display of retail merchandise for propane tanks on the property at 8770 South Howell Avenue. So Howell and Hughes. Again, outdoor display of retail merchandise is a conditional use in the before highway business zoning district. And again, as was the case with the last public hearing, there was an existing conditional use permit issued to this property for a separate matter, I think back in 1995. Same thing, the request is for the permanent display of a propane exchange cage at the entrance to Pick 'n Save at this property. Plan Commission has, again, reviewed this request back at the meeting of September 22nd, and they have recommended approval, subject to the conditions and restrictions. With that in mind, anyone who has any questions or comments, if you are with us virtually this evening, once acknowledged, please proceed to give your name, address, and address your questions or comments to the committee council. If you are here with us in person, once your name is called, please proceed to the microphone and address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Any wishing to speak? Kevin? Anybody online? Second call. Anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of that ordinance and number seven, to consider that conditional use permit. Questions from council?
No questions, just comment. Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd district. I received no feedback from area residents in regard to this matter, so no opposition.
Who else? No. Exact same circumstance, and you'll find that with the next item as well. Same result, so just different location.
Mr. Mayor, you also, can you pong the drum of if you're parking in the fire lane?
Oh, yeah, I always kind of bring this up. Unless you drive a fire engine for a living or a police car, please do not park in the fire lanes at Pick 'n Save. That is reserved for emergency vehicles only, and we realize in times people want to get in and out quick, but that is reserved for emergency only, so please be respectful of our frontline people. Thanks, Chris. Motion?
Dukenyak moved to approve ordinance number 2986, and this approves a conditional use permit amendment to allow outdoor display of retail merchandise, which would be propane, a propane tank cage area at the entrance to the existing Pick 'n Save store on the property at 8770 South Howell Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
I apologize, we had two out of the three Pick 'n Saves. We must have taken care of College Avenue prior. Item eight is consideration of a PUD amendment. It amends the existing planned unit development affecting the properties from 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel, and 7700 South IKEA Way. So Catherine, please read that into the official record.
Certainly, public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Walden OC LLC for amendments to the existing planned unit development affecting the properties at the properties of 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel Avenue, and 7700 South IKEA Way. Applicant is Walden OC LLC with property owner Walden OC LLC. Legal description there follows, and the date of notice is September 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Doug, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do apologize for all the addresses. Those were all consolidated into one parcel, which has yet to receive its final address and P number, so again, bear with us for that. Appreciate it. So in January of this year, the council did adopt ordinance 2964, which rezoned the property and issued a planned unit development, the properties that were just mentioned, noted as the Creekside Crossing Marketplace. And this, for those of you who are familiar, and for those who aren't, is a site that's seen the plan as a destination retail development that will consist of a mix of uses, which are likely to include hospitality, destination retail, food and beverage, and multifamily residential in a mixed-use setting. Now, since that approval, staff has been working with representatives from Walden OC, the individual developers and consultants on plans for the continued development of this planned development. And it was during these discussions that several inconsistencies in the approved plan unit development narrative and conditions and restrictions were discovered. So the conditions and restrictions that are attached to this request have been updated to clarify the intent of that PUD narrative and to correct those inconsistencies, which include assigning owner responsibility for signs within public rights away, clarifying parking lot setback and landscaping requirements, clarifying overall PUD setback requirements, updating buffer yard requirements, and addressing future inconsistencies between the PUD narrative and the conditions and restrictions. Now, it is important to note that the Plan Commission view of site building, landscaping, and related plans for individual development sites within the PUD is still required and will take place at a later date, once those developments are firmed up. And in fact, the initial development, the hotel and conference center, has already been approved by the Plan Commission as part of the Creekside Crossing Marketplace. So as I hinted earlier, the Plan Commission did review this request at the meeting of September 22nd, and they have recommended their approval, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. This being a public hearing, I request that if anyone is with us virtually this evening, once you are recognized by the moderator, please proceed to address, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. Likewise, if you're with the council chambers, once recognized, please step up to the podium, your name, and proceed to address your comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Kevin?
We do have Kevin Kennedy associated with the project, and he's available for questions.
Is available for questions? Thank you. Second call. Anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and go on to item nine, which is consideration of the ordinance approving that PUD amendment. Open it up to the council. Questions, comments? Anything, Greg?
This too was discussed at planning, and I don't recall any issues there. I've heard nothing from anybody in District Two. The only question I had at planning was regards to setbacks along residential property, because there is still that one residential lot there, and that was clarified at planning, so no other issues with this.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Seeing none, motion?
Oracle moved to adopt ordinance number 2987, approving amendments to the planned unit development on the properties at 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel Avenue, and 7700 East IKEA Way.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
And item 10 is consideration of charter ordinance relating to government administration of standing committees, boards, and commissions of the City of Oak Creek to repeal and recreate various sections. Catherine, if you would, read that in.
Certainly, public hearing number four is to consider a charter ordinance relating to the government and administration of standing committees, boards, and commissions of the City of Oak Creek to repeal and recreate sections 2.23, 2.60 sub A, 2.60 sub C sub 1, 2.60 sub D sub 1, 2.60 sub E, 2.60 sub F, 2.60 sub H, 2.61 sub E, 2.62 sub A, 2.63 sub A, 2.66 sub A, 2.68 sub A, 2.68 sub B sub 1, 2.68 sub C, 2.70 sub A, 2.71 sub A, 2.71 sub B, 2.72 sub A sub 7, 2.77 sub A, A, 2.78 sub A, 2.79 sub D, and to repeal sections 2.60 sub I, 2.67, 2.73, and 2.75 of the municipal code. Date of notice is September 23rd, 2020.
Great, thank you, Catherine. I appreciate your reading all that. Again, it is public hearing. Andrew, would you like to give us a narrative before we make the calls?
Thanks, Mayor and council. Just real briefly, because I know we've been, this is our third meeting, and this thing has evolved to this point this evening, so I thought I'd just recount quickly where we settled with regards to the higher level ordinance changes that are in the public record and being proposed tonight and discussed at the public hearing. So I believe I'm sharing my screen. Again, in accordance with our SAP document for the city, the staff brought forward later in the summer, this past summer, a proposal to examine and ultimately reconfigure our board committee and commission structure. You met, I believe, August 18th to September 15th, and now we're meeting here this evening for the hearing. So where we settled in terms of what the council directive was to put forward in the ordinance for the public hearing is really kind of threefold, maybe fourfold. First, we are looking to combine the currently separate Personnel and Finance Committees. That combined committee, the Personnel and Finance Committee, very clever name, will be a total of three members, all of which, all three will be aldermen, which is currently the present makeup of the Personnel Committee. There was discussion at our last meeting that, just given to some of the confidential and insensitive nature of those personnel discussions, that keeping it an aldermanic committee would be most appropriate. That committee would also continue to serve as our labor bargaining team for our police and fire bargains, and then the same ex officio members would be included on that committee. Secondly, the creation of a new Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. This would effectively combine the current Water and Sewer Utility Commission, the Traffic and Safety Commission, and the CIP Committee. As I described probably at each of the last two meetings, Traffic and Safety and CIP meet rather infrequently, four or five times a year tops. Water and Sewer Utility Commission, obviously very active, so kind of pushing those together in this new Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. The end result of that makeup that you directed to go to hearing with was three aldermanic representatives, two citizen representatives, and then one additional citizen alternate to vote in the absence of one of the other regular citizen members. So a total of six folks, three aldermen, three citizens at large participating in those discussions, and then the citizen alternative rep only voting in the absence of one of the regular citizen reps. I hope that was clear. Personnel matters that were previously handled by the Water and Sewer Utility Commission would be, just like every other position in the city, handled through Personnel, the new Personnel and Finance Committee in this case, but then ultimately, if needed, the common council. This would house a committee of jurisdiction for larger public works projects or policy matters. Currently, we don't have that. And then moving forward, what I think the council will do if the ordinance is approved, we should have a discussion, because I think it's the intent of the council to provide for this committee, much like the Water and Sewer Utility Commission has right now, provide for them certain areas of jurisdiction, if you will, that is exclusive to that Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, where that group and that group only decides certain matters, spending within certain thresholds, et cetera, et cetera. The goal is to not have everything necessarily come to the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, and then the council. They may have their own autonomy within that, much like the Water and Sewer Utility Commission does now. And then, of course, certain ex officio members. And the big bombshell, we are eliminating the Landscape and Beautification Committee, potentially rehoming at least some of that function with the Parks and Recreation Commission, or maybe not even doing that, but we can sort that out. But that is redlined out in this ordinance. I would say that in regards to the Water and Sewer Utility Commission and the creation of a Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, the statute, state statutes really provide three ways to, you know, provide oversight, a municipality can provide oversight for their utility. The first one is a utility commission, like we've had for many years, decades, consisting of three, five, or seven members. In lieu of that, communities can have a Board of Public Works, and in lieu of that, a community, a common council, a village board can say, you can create any officer or officers to oversee the utility. So for instance, as you see in the lengthy analysis, communities organize this very different ways. In communities with the city manager, for instance, the city manager is in charge of the utility, at least in a few of the examples in Wisconsin, like Beloit, for example. That last option, any number of office, any officer, number of officers, as you choose as a council, could also include the common council itself serving as the oversight body of the utility operations and enterprise. I won't speak to the rest of that. I'd be happy to help facilitate any discussion after we get through the public hearing sentiments, but I just wanted to recapture kind of the evolution of our discussion, the last three meetings till now, and what the bigger ticket items you see in the proposed ordinance change.
And said it, Andrew?
That's it.
All right, thank you. This is the first call. We do have some people that have signed up and are physically with us, and we will also check online. We will give precedence to those that showed up first. So Don Ashbaugh? Name and address, please.
Don Ashbaugh, 8822 South Knoll Haven Drive. As you know, former utility manager for 13 years, worked for the utility for 40 years. And as you know, I'm deeply concerned about the proposed city utility operational change, and I'll outline some things in my letter to you. I sent the letter about those concerns, and I had some phone conversations also, and in that I was assured that there's going to be a hearing, you know, which there is. However, I didn't think that this hearing would be thrown in with all these other little public hearings and treated as just a committee action. We're talking here about elimination of a commission that's responsible for two enterprise funds with a $16 million operational funds and probably $5 million a year capital funds. This commission was established by a charter ordinance, and when it was established, those people gave a lot of thought to it and thought that it was very important. So when I had some conversations with some people about this, they asked me, you know, what's this all about? What's a SAP? I don't see anything on the agenda about the utility. And I said, well, it's under Chapter 2. What's Chapter 2? With that following that, I think a lot more communication is needed. No one knows about this hearing. To me, the utility commission is like a board of directors, responsible to the ratepayers, and it's similar to like the board of directors in a private business, and they're responsible to their shareholders. When major changes are made like that, there's notices sent out to everyone. I think the action that you people are about to take deserves a full and proper hearing with a PowerPoint presentation presenting, this is what you have with the commission, this is what you're going to give with the board, and in much detail. There are so many things that could be answered and given out to the ratepayers. I don't think this thing should be rushed through. I hope you consider tabling the utility issue on SAP this evening and bring it back at a later date, especially when this COVID-19 is over. You look around, nobody can even attend this meeting, and half the people I know don't even know how to get on streamlining. So with that, I hope you consider those comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don, for that input. Appreciate it. Next, we have Lyle Ashbaugh.
May I begin?
Oh, yes. Name and address, please.
My name is Lyle Ashbaugh. I live at 1441 East Medeville Drive. I'm here talking opposition of this reorganizing the utility commission into a new department works, at least right away, because this, I think, is happening too fast, and it should be at least postponed, so we can have more and more discussion about this. be at least postponed so we can have more and more discussion about this. There's a lot of big differences between city government and, you know, water utility. City government is a provider of services. Most decisions are made for items that have an end date. You have for your projects and your discrete work orders. It must be able to adapt to sometimes rapidly changing short-term priorities. You know, changing long-term plans are acceptable, maybe even necessary, and you serve the taxpayers. Water Sewer Utility, that's a provider of goods, more like manufacturing. Most decisions are made for items with no end date. They have continuous operations, repetitive work orders, supply chain. You must resist changing to short-term priorities. Committing to long-term plans are paramount, and they serve ratepayers. I read the original memo from the city administrator dated August 18th. I have a couple of issues with it. One, the proposal does not have any hard metrics or measures associated with success. What is the definition of done? In my 30 years of private business, 20 years with Fortune 100 manufacturing firm, any proposal for change without hard demonstrable measures of success be summarily rejected. There is no problem statement, only an ambiguous goal of better alignment. Furthermore, inspired, aligned, and proactive city leadership is not a critical success factor. That is, by definition, a business strategy classification. And some of the items two and three regarding pay compression and compensation equality issues, to me, they're non-starters. As demonstrated above, city utility are completely different enterprises, and differing compensation is warranted and should be expected. I've held similar IT jobs with Fortune 500 companies in banking, manufacturing, and mortgage insurance with vastly differing compensation. Item six, resource overlap for payroll accounting and custodial engineering. You can resolve all that and share services without removing the utility commission. Item seven, eight regarding oversight. I defer to the response from the utility general manager on August 7th. All bond issues, contracts, and special assessment rates and land procedures, easements and sewer rate changes are all approved by the common council board. So in conclusion, the reorganization is going to be a very big change, and you think you're biting off more than you can chew if you do it this quickly. It would be a disservice to the city and the ratepayers to do that. Please postpone this action. You can go ahead with the rest of your organization, the other committees, and maybe look at bringing in the utility after that. I just think you're going to have to get used to this new board and have established a process before you bring in something that's so vastly different. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Thanks for coming in and for the information. Appreciate it. And our last in-person is John Belkey. Go on up, John. All right, John, name and address, please.
John Belkey, 8506 South 13th Street. I'd like to address this to Andy, please.
Sure.
Hey, Andy, I appreciate your calls. I appreciate hearing from you. When you return the call to a taxpayer resident, it shows you care, you show you have respect for that person. We need more people like you in this city. I think we should have a referendum. We talked about this. You had mentioned, John, it's not at that level. But that's your opinion. There are a lot of other people out there that think it's at the level where everyone in the city should have a say in who governs the water utility. I spoke to many people in Oak Creek that did not know this was going on. Granted, you put in the paper twice, I think it was, more than you had to for the meeting. Come on, Andy, who reads the paper? A lot of people don't know this is happening in their own city. Oak Creek water has a long, rich history, from the start to where it is now. We're doing a good thing here. Why should we change it? Why? If this is good, okay, it could be, I could be wrong, probably the second time, all right? If it's so good, they'll let the taxpayers have a say. They'll say yes, or they'll say no. Let them have a say in it. It's their city, too, not just these people or yours. People are smart. They'll decide what's right for them. All right? Thanks, Andy. And Chris Kuzakowski, thank you for all the phone conversations, and I enjoy talking with you and your wife. I appreciate it. Thank you. And also, let me know about those trees before the common council cuts everything down just to put a building up there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. We will now make the second call. Kevin, is there anyone online wishing to speak?
We have a Gerald Willie.
Would you allow them to speak and get their name and address for the record, please?
Jerry, you should be able to speak. You have to unmute yourself.
My name is Gerald Willie, 8112 South Monocourt, Oak Creek. I'm a former member of the Oak Creek Commission. 60 years ago, as the city was growing, the council created the Water and Sewer Utility because they could see that they would not have the time to oversee the operation of the utility. They selected the utility commission as the best alternative, as spelled out in the state statutes, to oversee the utility operation. That arrangement has worked super well, and the utility has grown and become the best in the state, one of the top 10 in the country. Our people help other utilities all around the country to try and get as good as we are. As it has grown, so have the problems and the time required for management. I know of no real problems that have ever occurred with the current setup. So the question, which no one seems to be able to answer, is why do you want to change it? It's still the best option under the statutes. The proposed changes represent a whole new set of problems for the operation of the utility. There already are quite enough to deal with. Some of the problems have been thought of, but I'm sure there are many more that will come up if the reorganization ever takes place. There always are. You don't find them until you try to make the changes. The proposed change will make it more difficult to run the utility and will consume more of the management valuable time. It will take longer to get work done to get things approved. It seems we are rushing into this without proper consideration. There seems to be more problems with other city departments. So go ahead and solve those problems, but none of them involve the utility, so leave the utility out of it. Like your predecessors found out, they didn't need to waste time running utility when a commission could do a better job for them. They also will be creating some personnel problems. The commission has always worked hard at creating excellent relationships with our employees. Among the roughly 30 at the utility, no one likes the reorganization. Yes, their jobs will be the same, they hear that, but the close relationship with the commission is gone, and they're not sure they like the new arrangement. In fact, they're pretty sure they don't. No one asked them for any input. We already have lost one critical employee due entirely to the proposed changes. So I suggest that you turn this proposal down, return to the table, work out a change for the departments that have problems, and leave the best-run utility alone. You all are welcome to come to commission meetings if you want more information. You already get our minutes, you get our financial report, which will put you to sleep for about three months. If you don't have time for that, how will three of you have time for the meeting that is attached to other meetings created by this bill? I hope you can sit for a long time. Ah, oh, well, golf is really not that much fun anyway. Thank you for your time. I've had a real pleasure to work with the great staff at the utility.
Thank you, Jerry, and we appreciate your service.
You already have a letter from me, and you already heard from me on what makes the utility very different from any other city department. I hope you remember all that. If you didn't, I'd be happy to send it to you.
Thank you, Jerry. Kevin, is there anybody else? Okay, we will move on to the third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak? Please approach podium, and here we go. Name and address, ma'am.
Sure, thank you. Michelle Cloppa Sullivan. I reside at 10855 South Harrian Lane, and I've been a resident of Oak Creek for 22 years. I have a simple question for you. What problem are you trying to solve? Why are you eliminating an independent, nonpartisan Water and Sewer Utility Commission? All of you as politicians come and go, sometimes in short order, it's up to the voters, obviously, but the purpose of a separate, nonpolitical utility commission is to make sure that decisions are based on what's in the best interest of public health, not what's important to the politicians of today. I've been a civil engineer for over 30 years, working at municipal, state, and consulting levels. I can see what politics do in engineering. It's not pretty sometimes. I can sure you can ask your own engineering staff and their experience, because they have a lot of it, as engineers. The city administrator wants to correct some inconsistencies in the general manager not reporting to him, but the librarian, police chief, and fire chief also do not report to him. Why are those changes not included at the same time? Why isn't it addressed? Of course, the utilities have rates and collect separate money from the ratepayers, which, by the way, goes beyond just the citizens of Oak Creek. This is going to affect citizens in Franklin and Caledonia also. That money is to treat and convey water and to convey sanitary sewage. The police and fire and library do not have separate pots of money to dive into for purposes other than what it was intended for. The memo mentions resource overlap, but clearly the author doesn't understand PSC requirements for water utilities, for the expertise required for the accounting, special training required for treatment plant operators, sanitary sewer inspection, and the knowledge required for presenting projects and rates to the PSC for water utilities. Specialized knowledge isn't interchangeable just because you might hold a similar job. You can't take your public works people and throw them into a sewer trench, and it's disrespectful to all of those people to say that it's the same work. The public works staff work really hard for the utilities or the citizens of Oak Creek. Economic development was also listed as a reason for the change, which I'm interpreting to mean that the city may want to let developers do whatever they want to do regarding the best interests of what the developers want to do, but that's not necessarily in the best interest of the taxpayers. I, for one, appreciate that when people are looking out for my best interest. All of development is not good development. I've lived here for a long time, seen a lot of good stuff, and some not-so-good stuff, too. The memo states that there are no checks and balances for financial decisions, which is not true. Somebody else pointed this out, that the PSC sets water rates, no one can change that. Common council approves sewer rates, and bond issuances are also approved by the common council. A well-run utility has funds that probably look attractive during this COVID-19 pandemic, but robbing the utility to pay for other expenses only puts public health at risk. We all want efficient government and deserve that, but we expect you, our elected officials, to put our taxpayers' health above expansion of power of a city employee. I hope the common council will take some time to make sure that this was the best decision for the taxpayers, but it doesn't appear that that's the case. We all saw what happened when government took over water in Flint, Michigan. Those people didn't deserve it, and the citizens of Oak Creek don't deserve it again either. Again, I'll ask you, what problem are you trying to solve that can't be solved under the current situation? And I would like, if one of the elected officials would like to answer that, that would be great when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. This is the third and final call. Kevin, if there is nobody else on the line, we will now close the public hearing and move on to item 11, which is considerance of that ordinance change. I'll now open it up to council for questions, comments. Who wants to start us off? Rich?
Yeah, I'll begin, Mayor. Thank you so very much. And I want to begin by thanking Mike Sullivan, Don Ashbaugh, Gerald Willie, and Michelle Sullivan for your comments this evening. Common theme amongst each of you, and I did have the opportunity to meet with Mike, I had several phone conversations with Don to get a better grasp or feel as to what their genuine concerns were about this proposed change. And the common theme that I was hearing throughout was something about politics. And I'm having a difficult time understanding. Each referenced that they want to get politics out of the water utilities business. And Mr. Willie had given the example that in the political process, representatives on a proposed new commission could be changed every so often, as determined by the voters of our community. And I scratched my head a little bit, and I go, okay, that is true, but commission members can be changed on a yearly basis as well? Or is it yearly?
Apparently five.
But they rotate, whereas...
They could.
They're not all at the same time.
No, you're correct in that. They serve staggered terms.
So there would almost be the same situation where a commission member could have the possibility of being removed or changed as well?
Correct. And just to be clear in what's going forward, I'd like to keep that institutional knowledge of that commission. And I've contacted each commissioner out there and asked them they'd be willing to serve as a citizen rep, and three of the four said they would be interested in continuing to serve in that citizen capacity, just to be clear to council.
So that was one of the biggest, I guess, questions that I had and tried to understand about this so-called politics in the water, in the operation of the Water and Sewer Utility. My understanding of this proposed change is that nothing operationally is going to change with the utility, and I guess I have to defer to my colleagues on council, or Andrew. Ken, you're on that commission, so with the, if this proposed ordinance change goes through, operationally, there will be nothing different with the utility. They'll continue to provide the same quality services to our tax-paying citizens, you know, as they have been doing for decades. And I thank, again, those members out in the audience that have been part of that for so long. But is that correct? For right now, I'm trying to go through and that's the only comment that I have at this particular time. I mean, if any of those, Mike or Don, if you'd like to come up and kind of explain a little bit that concern about...
No, we're going to, before we get into that, I'm going to let each council member go, or we're going to be on a back and forth all night. And everybody had their fair share, they asked their questions. We'll try to answer them appropriately.
My apologies.
That's okay. Steve, you got anything?
I do, but I'd like to go last, please.
Sure. Thank you. Mike?
I'd like to follow up on Alderman Dukneck's comments. He stole my thunder a little bit because my issue was the politics, too. It's a reoccurring theme with some of the emails I've gotten. People are worried about us bringing politics, the council, into the water utility. I reiterate your comments about how the water utility's been run. You know, I know Mike Sullivan, I know Don Ashbaugh, I know a lot of the people that worked at the utility for many years. I have a lot of respect for the utility. When you say it's in the top 10 in the country, you're right. We have an extremely well-run utility. I don't expect the expertise of the utility, the way it's run, to be lost at all, because I want the same people in place. I do believe we need a little oversight by the council, by the elected officials, because I think the taxpayers deserve that. I would, you know, to address this politic thing, because I think it's gotten way out of hand, I would like everybody to know here tonight, and just a reminder of some of the duties that the aldermen have that are going to be serving on this new structured commission. Here's some of the things that we go through every day as aldermen, okay? Now, this may seem trivial, but these are the things we deal with. And my point here, my endpoint is going to be that there are no politics involved in our job, or very little, okay? Let's start with some of the things, and I'm going to try and stay within my three minutes, so I'm going to go through this real quick. Here's what happens when my phone rings as an alderman. I have a sidewalk in front of my house that has a trip hazard. Please address it. There's water collecting around my house. My sump pump runs constantly. There's a clock catch basin in front of my house. Please take care of it. There's a neighbor's tree hanging over my lotline. Street parking when it snows, it's a big issue. Get a lot of calls on that. My culvert in front of my street can't handle the amount of water during a big rainfall. I get a lot of calls on that. My neighbor's yard is full of junk. Please take care of that. Cars are parked on my neighbor's grass. Take care of that. I think you're getting the idea here. A stop sign... A stop sign issue, crosswalk issue. There's neighbors buzzing through my yard with ATVs. Those are the things we deal with every day, okay? There is no politics involved in most of our everyday work, zero politics, okay? The three main issues that we deal with, and most of these are at budget time, are cost of living raises for our employees, which is tough to meet some years, depending on the budget, additional employees that we may have to add to various departments, which have to be justified, biggest impacts are in fire and police, it's hard to add personnel, capital equipment purchases. Those three main issues that we deal with can only be addressed by the development in this community. Those are the only way we get to pay our bills, because the state has expenditure restraint, you know, the rules that we have to come under. If we don't create new development, which is probably the biggest issue that we deal with here on the council, we can't pay any of these bills and add employees in a growing city. State mandates a lot of what we do here. We don't have a lot of wiggle room. Our budget process, I've got 17 years on this council, and our budget process has gotten easier every year because of expenditure restraints. We're locked into basically what we spend every year. So the bottom line is here, the way I look at my job of 17 years on this council, and I think, you know, there's a lot of people around me that have experience here, some are new starters, some have a lot of years on the council, I've never considered myself a politician. The true, look up the definition of a politician, it's somebody that wants to advance. You want to look at real, true politicians? Look at people that do it full-time with the state in Washington. Those are true politicians. They make a living out of it, a career. There's nobody up here, we all have separate careers. We do things, we do other things full-time to feed our families. I don't consider myself a politician. So as far as bringing politics into this, I just don't see the argument. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mike. Well said. Ken, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, this has been a process that's been going on for several months now. We've been, obviously, have closely thought about and examined what's been going on. I think the city minister has laid out a game plan and a plan moving forward that makes a lot of sense for the community, and I think that's really what it boils down to, is doing what's best for the community and striving to streamline and make the operation more efficient continually. And we have, it isn't like this is the first thing that this governing body has done in terms of looking at streamlining and making things more efficient and more accountable for the community. I mean, I wrote down quickly this afternoon just some things that in my 12 years that we've been part of in terms of making changes to this organization to make it a better operation for the community and make it more accountable to the community. And there is a long list of stuff, you know, going on from, especially, it really was a catalyst when this building was built in terms of the recreation and library staff coming together, the creation of the administrative pool, and the tweaks that we've done to that since it came onboard. We created a new professional human resources position. We rolled up the various departments, the department of what we call the Department of Public Works now, in terms of one body rather than various separate divisions of streets and parks and forestry. We did wage and skill revaluations or reassessments and new schedules for pay at the DPW and at our dispatch organization to reflect some of the changes that needed to be done. We restarted a finance committee, and subsequently it stalled and hasn't met in a few years, and now we're looking at actually kind of bringing it back into the fold and reorganizing in a fashion that's going to make some sense. We took a look at joining a consortium of healthcare departments on the South Shore at one point and decided it wasn't right, and then did a subsequent reevaluation and rejiggering of the healthcare department. Sanitarian is an operation we've actually took out of the health department, moved to inspection. Andrew, since he's been with us, created a new position, the Assistant City Administrator slash Controller, which obviously has evolved to assume a lot of the responsibility from that standpoint of managing some of the day-to-day operations in the city. The clerk treasurer, Catherine, has been a part of the transition there. We've decided then made a move to move those positions from elected to appointed, given the fact that they have grown in such responsibility and accountability for the city. We thought that having professionals onboard and the ability to appoint qualified individuals made the most sense for the community. It goes on, and right now, we're actually still in the process of examining a couple of other things. Andrew's in the process of right now examining whether or not we maintain our rec department as it stands, or if we look at a co-branded effort with the school district. So this body has looked at a lot of organizational changes over time. We owe that to our community to really be efficient and serve to make it more accountable, more answerable to them, and I think this is just another step in that direction. In terms of the utility board, I've been on that board for 12 years. I've been witness to how it's operated, how it's evolved, how it's changed, how it interacts with the city. In the past, what some common councils have granted, the Water Utility Board, the powers and oversight responsibility, some other council, and this council in particular, and other councils in the past have looked at taking back. So it is, you know, it is a give and take. One push comes to shove, though, the Water Utility, as it says right here on its annual financial report, Water Utility is a departmental unit of the city of Oak Creek. And if you looked at the audited results of the financial statements of the city of Oak Creek that were published recently, you'll notice the Water Utility is fully integrated into those reports as well. So it isn't like the Water Utility is this standalone entity that has to kind of stay off that way and remain that way. The city and utility are obviously much changed in the past decade. You've seen an incredible amount of economic activity in the city. You've seen an incredible amount of change at that standpoint. You've seen the staff and this elected body handle some incredible amounts of business activity. And from that standpoint, you know, the increase in the tax base here, we just saw that number from a few months ago. The tax base in Oak Creek has increased from $3.1 billion to $4.2 billion in the last four years. It's a 35% increase, and you have to give credit to our staff and our professionals and the electeds in this building to really, they're doing something right when something like that happens, and you have to give credit to the fact that they have, that they fully analyzed the situation and come to the conclusion that something makes the most sense for the community, that you have to give that a lot of weight. And from that standpoint, I think, given the full examination, and I think as we've fully vetted this whole proposal here for the past few months, I think it's made fully a great deal of sense that we move forward, but this board reorganization, the commission structure that's been outlined, and I fully support that as it's laid out.
Thank you, Ken. Chris?
Well, everyone has kind of stole most of my thunder. I think I just need to reiterate that, you know, there's no change in any of the plant personnel, day in and day out. We have the same general manager, leading the same group of people, problem-solving, you know, day in and day out to make things happen. None of that's changing. The only thing that's changing, and I'm not trying to minimize a board or a commission or whatever, but that's the only thing that's changing, how it's getting done day in and day out, that's what's not changing. And that's what the impact, the emphasis should be on, is how it's being done on a daily basis, because that's not changing.
Thank you, Chris. Greg?
So I kind of went back and forth on this. I pushed for more representation by citizens on the board and then conceded to the current makeup that's being proposed here. But I did hear, obviously, a lot of points were made. I did hear one thing today that kind of outlined the council is, the council answers to the voters, the citizens, and the water commission answers to the ratepayers. And while I don't feel that they're interchangeable, the ratepayer and taxpayer, because it does serve other communities, I do understand the importance of the accountability aspect. And if they are truly serving the ratepayers, if the ratepayers have an issue, they have no really way to make changes, other than reaching out to the mayor, the council president, whoever's appointing the people that are on the commission. Whereas placing alderpeople on the commission itself, the ratepayers and the taxpayers have a means to make a change if they don't agree with anything that's being done by voting, and voting that person out of office, making the change that way. So, I mean, that's kind of my take on it.
Well said, Greg. Good points. Steve, I'm gonna return back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a moment, please. Yeah, the common theme I heard tonight was a word that was politics, and it's been addressed by other aldermen. I'm not so sure I want to make a lot of comments about that. But I think Alderman Lorick was looking over my shoulder when I was making my notes, because I think there is a huge distinction between the current setup where you're accountable, you answer to the ratepayers versus you're accountable to taxpayers. And like Alderman Lorick said, if I have a beef right now with something, I understand the rates are set by public service commissions, you know, most parts. But again, if I have, like Alderman Lorick said, if I got a beef with the water sewer utility, I don't have much recourse. But with three aldermen sitting on the new commission, my recourse would be to try and replace the alderman, because they're accountable to the taxpayer. So, you know, we talked about not having a lot of time to study this. Some comments were made, don't rush into this. Well, this is our third meeting, and we've had a plethora of papers that were given to us to review. We had a lot of healthy comments about this. And, you know, talking about department heads, some of the, one of the comments tonight was department heads answer to the city administrator and some answer to the common council. That's correct. I mean, police and fire chief, I believe they answer to us, because, and then some department heads answer to the city administrator. But they all come to the council come budget time. And I believe bringing in the water and sewer utility into that process, I'm not trying to steal money from anybody, we're just, again, we're trying to be accountable, we trying, everybody in that room wants to be accountable to the taxpayer. I share Alderman Toman's list of phone calls about this and about that, and the common denominator is, I pay a lot of money in taxes and I want those things fixed. Well, unfortunately, we don't have that magic wand to get it done. We reach out to responsible departments and hopefully something gets done. One of the benefits I see, because I don't think it's being done now, is the water and sewer, correct me if I'm wrong, water and sewer utility, they have their own IT and they have their own payroll systems? Is that gonna, that'll come into the fold?
It's not changing. I mean, it can be looked at somewhere down the line, but eventually that might be a...
Could be.
A matter.
Okay, that, you know, I could. And somebody made a comment tonight about problems in other departments. I am bothered by those comments because, well, okay, you have problems in other departments. What are they? Don't just make those comments and say, we need to deal with those problems, before you deal with the water and sewer utility. I don't know of any other problems. I mean, the biggest problem I've had lately is the fact that the police department is becoming more reactive than proactive, and that is just by virtue of tax levy limitations, can't hire as many cops as you want, city's getting bigger, it's just a cumulative amount of issues with that. But it is what it is right now. So that kind of bothers me when those comments are made. And for what it's worth, when it comes to politics, someone made the comment, there's a small definition of council responsibilities of a city councilman. Part of it says, "Tasked with establishing the overall direction of the city and providing general direction to the city manager," or in our case, "city administrator." That's what we're doing. We are developing something that we feel is best for the city. And as I said before, as somebody who has been the participant in the nation's largest reorganization in federal government, and I've seen the birthing pains, I saw it's gotten a lot better. And so are people gonna be offended by what might happen tonight? Sure. But I trust that everybody will do their best to make it work, try and make it work, and go from there. I say this in the humor that I hope to, you know, that you hear this in. But I noticed that the water utility bills the city for Digger's Hotline fees, and then the fire department bills the water utility for fire inspection fees. I just find that to be rather comical, and I'm hoping that if there are some changes, and if that's a little internal strife between the two departments, I'm hoping that if we make some changes that those little things will go away, because you just, we shouldn't have to be paying those little things. I mean, it should be city services, city services. So I just throw that out there with levity. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I guess I'll take the floor. I'm gonna, a lot of the points were made, and they were made well. I thank you all for your input, both public and the council. I'm just, I jotted down some notes when some of the speakers were up. Very quickly, I just want to reiterate one thing. This is not an elimination of the committee or the oversight of utility. It's simply a realignment and a different appointment structure. And again, a little bit different committee makeup by one, okay? Somebody mentioned it's an elimination of a committee. It's really just a restructure going into the future. Transparency was brought up. This process has been very transparent. This started actually quite a while ago when we laid out our strategic plan. And actually, if you really go back to the old city hall, it was brought up then to restructure this. And again, it failed. And I was a no vote on that. I was an alderman at the time, and I was a no vote. And I voted no because of the lack of transparency. And when this was brought up, as we were going through our strategic plan, I said, I would address it as long as we were upfront with the utility and could work with them. And again, we worked right along with them. There is nothing we put forward to the utility that wasn't transparent and out there. We've posted it, you know, John kind of made the point to Andrew. We did put it out there. We can't account for what the public chooses to pay attention to and chooses not to. But I think Mike kind of made that pretty clear on some of the phone calls we get. You know, the sky is falling over the little things, and then some bigger things are going on in the city, which may be more pressing and affect them more greatly, and nobody seems to care about it. And everybody I've talked to seems to support this in the public that's been brought up. We address the city services and water products and taxpayers versus ratepayers and the whole thing. In the end, we're here to serve communities. It's bottom line what it comes down to. And it's our goal to serve them as best we can, as efficiently as we can. As mentioned, the city's not a business. It's true. But yet, by the same token, we're expected to run it like a business. We have a budget, we're accountable to a board of directors called the public. And believe me, if we ran it like some of the businesses recently in the city, Oak Creek wouldn't be in too good a shape, and I'll throw Briggs and Stratton out there for that matter. So again, I'm pretty proud, if we are a business, and I think Ken alluded to that, boy, in private industry, we'd be considered really good. So leave it at that. Long-range history, why the change? Okay? We do have a long-range history, and this was set up, and Don knows it better than anybody, and a lot of community people know this. People that sat here and helped Oak Creek become what it is, set things up looking not at the here and now, but where they want it to be in 10, 15 years. What was on the horizon, what the curve was going to be. This is basically the same thing we're looking at. In five to 10 years, the water business may be different. Maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a water expert, but customers can change, agreements can change. Water can become, is going to become a commodity, and I think it is right now, quite frankly. More people are buying bottled water and what have you. The whole industry may change. This is really helping to position us to be successful in the future. This is really helping to position us to be successful in the future, to help serve communities. So, that's really the whole thing. But we're not discounting the history. We're looking to the future. Also was brought up, Alderman Kirkowski touched on it, about other departments have problems. We all got problems. Utility is not without its challenges, nor is the city. So, the finger pointing, I'm with you, Steve. I took a little bit of offense to that. Again, nothing's perfect. We all have challenges. We know it's a changing environment. When the utility was set up, of course, I wasn't there, but I don't think, I guess it'd be my opinion that government and finance wasn't quite as complicated as it is now. So, kind of leave it at that. It'll take more time to run the utility. Nothing's changing. They're going to produce water the same way. It's, the process isn't changing one bit. So, I don't know where that comment came from. Lastly, what problems are we trying to solve? Again, it's not problems. It's positioning to serve ourselves better. And I've been part of organizations that failed to see trends coming. I've been part of businesses that failed to see that their model was going to become not what it needed to be. I'm not saying that's our utility, but I'm saying those businesses either waned out of business, were taken over, or no longer exist. I think whether it's the water utility, whether it's police and fire, and Ken brought this up, you have to look inward at your own model. And we did it with our health department some years back. IT is a growing industry. We're sharing that with South Milwaukee. There are things you have to look internally at and actually evaluate yourself, and this is one of them. You know, fire, we've talked about consolidations there with other communities. These are exercises we have to go through. And until you go through the exercises and you check all the boxes, you don't know if it's the right path to go down. Again, one other thing that was mentioned, and I did, you know, I did not like the wording of this, robbing of the utility. We're not robbing the utility of cash or anything like that. We don't need it. I mean, Ken brought up our growth, our utility, again, Mike brought this up, and again, this is a testament to the people down there. It's one of the top 10 in the country. We have, we have no interest in getting into the nuts and bolts and sausage making of what goes on down there. Not at all. Again, we think this can benefit everybody going forward. So, worker classification, again, I don't want to see anybody displaced. Believe me, I'm probably the first guy that'll jump up and down and stand up for a worker. I like to think I'm fair to the workforce that way. We're not going to go around and pop somebody from DPW or a summertime rec kid into the water department. It's not our business. It's not our goal. We've never done it. Wouldn't do it here. So, I'm not worried about worker classification. It's a high degree of skill in being a machine operator, being, running a water plant, for goodness sake, working in the library. Everything comes with a skill set, and they're not interchangeable. I fully believe in that. So, those are my comments. Again, it's been a long process. And again, we're probably not going to make everybody happy. But again, I do support the change. I have invited the current commissioners and got their opinion. If this does pass, if they'd be willing to serve, and as I said, three of four indicated they would like to serve, I want that institutional knowledge there, that history there. I'm happy these individuals want to continue to put into the city, to make it a great place to be. So, with that, Rich, you got the last word?
I hope, well, last word, but something that I did forget in my initial statements. And I had some discussions with Don about this, you know, times change, that the 50-year-old charter ordinance, you know, may not necessarily be appropriate for today's conditions. I'm sure during the course of your time at the utility, Don, Mike, same thing, you've seen that changes needed to be made for operational improvement. A success of any business, of a community organization, of a community itself, is its ability to adapt to the conditions. I heard Briggs and Stratton brought up. Sadly, there's the case of a business that didn't change to conditions, and we saw the result of it. I look at this, again, as an opportunity to improve. And Don and I had discussions. Don, wouldn't you want to consider the opportunity or the possibility to improve? And not the utility, but the oversight provided for the utility. And in turn, it probably makes the utility a better organization itself. So, I truly feel that, again, as long as there are little to no changes with the day-to-day operations of the utility, this slight change in oversight or governance is an opportunity to improve the utility, which ends up being a good thing for our community overall. So, I guess that's the last of my two cents worth.
Okay. What else before we look at a motion?
I just want to say thank you to Andrew. Get this document. He spent a lot of time and effort and work in this. I think he did a great job. Get help from staff.
Yeah, and I do want to make a point. You know, this really, Andrew was following out what was laid out in the strategic plan. And again, this had been kicked around by a couple city administrators along the way. This wasn't a brainchild to his for an ego or anything like that. Again, that was the instruction of the council going forward. I just want to be clear on that. So. Anything else, guys? Okay. We'll look for a motion on 11. Consideration relating to the government and administration of standing committees, boards, and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail will move to approve Charter Ordinance Number 16 relating to the government and administration of standing committees, boards, and commissions of the City of Oak Creek.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to new business. We have consideration of a resolution. It's authorizing the rescission of a 2019 personal property tax bill, including interest and penalties for the property at 6720 South 27th Street. I'm looking, is that Melissa? I was kind of looking. I thought maybe this was Barb's, but.
Always a team effort, Mayor. Thank you. So, this is, just as it says in the council report, the bottom line is that a personal property tax bill for 2019 was issued to this property. Property is at 6720 South 27th Street. That property changed hands, was not in operation as of 1-1 of 20, or excuse me, 1-1 of 19, when that personal property tax bill would have been applicable. So, to that extent, it's the city just moving forward and making that correction. So, that's why the resolution is before you. Typically, it would be the process that you've seen many times, and I know enjoyed my presentations, with how the property owner would need to have paid the tax and come before you. Given the nature of what this is, given the timing with the assessor discussion, and certainly with our city treasurer, it seemed prudent to bring this before you, to indicate that because the tax bill was issued in error as of 1-1 of 19, no personal property taxes due, no interest, no penalties. Pretty straightforward.
Any questions for Attorney Carl's? Seeing none?
I just want to say, I was out of the chambers for city attorneys and discussions, but I was, I had read this. So, just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Motion on 12, then, please.
Oracle was to adopt Resolution Number 12195-102020, authorizing the rescission of the 2019 Personal Property Tax Bill, including any interest and penalties for the property at 6720 South 27th Street.
Guskowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 13 is consideration of a motion to authorize the assignment of the current refuge and recycling contracts with advanced disposal to GFL Solid Waste Management, follow terms and conditions to remain, and further authorizes the mayor to sign the contract of August 19, 2020, with a letter to advance consenting to transfer those agreements. Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you just said it all, actually. I know included in the packet is the August 19, 2020 letter from Advanced Disposal. It was addressed to our Director of Public Works. Been in conversation with Ted and certainly Andrew to this matter. Essentially, there is a consolidation. There's a merger between waste management and advanced disposal. As part of that merger, there needs to be a divestiture of some assets. And the entity that would be purchasing assets such as our contracts for garbage and recycling is GFL. So, a subsidiary would take over these contracts. As you know, going back in 20, excuse me, we had a five-year contract, and we are in a two-year extension with advanced disposal. So, at the end, towards the end of next year, a year from now, we're going to be in a position where we are going to be need to seek bids anyway. So, this is really getting us to where we are going to be. No change in services. We anticipated the likelihood of going up for bid next year anyway, as part of our discussions. I know the council had a bigger presentation some time ago in terms of the recycling issues that you may recall. I've had conversation with their representative at Advanced Disposal, and recently with her, the Associate General Counsel, pointing, I asked, when is this going to occur? We would want to agree to it if it's contingent upon closing. Certainly, if there is no closing or approval of this merger, the Department of Justice is involved, because it would be such a major consolidation, then there would be no change. So, bottom line is, change in entity where we are assigning our contracts. I know you will be excited to know that we did not have that assignability in our previous contracts, so that's why we're here before you to ask for that authority.
Okay. Questions? Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, First District. I know over the years, I have fielded questions from residents about the, how much they don't appreciate private contracting, and they don't like this company, that company, whatever. And it is what it is. We've, I think, Advanced Disposal has stepped up their game a couple times with regards to some of the complaints I've had. And I wish Ted was here tonight, because I was going to ask him this question, and he's not. So, I took it upon myself to look into GFL Environmental with the Better Business Bureau. And I just want to make these comments for the record, just in case. Or, I don't want to say I told you so, but I'm just going to say, out of 130 customer reviews to the Better Business Bureau, GFL has a rating of one star, 1.05 out of 5. And I haven't read a positive comment about the company, and they're all very recent. They have a rating of A-, with the Better Business Bureau, and it says this business is not BBB accredited. So, I take it with a grain of salt that we're not going to have any changes in services. Based on what I read, I think the potential is there for problems with this company. And I just, I'm just saying that. I mean, I don't, I would just assume keep Advanced Disposal, and maybe in my sleep, I'll pray that the Department of Justice doesn't approve the merger. But if they do, and we end up with GFL, these are the reviews that that company has gotten. So, and that's who we're going to be stuck with until the end of next year. So, I was hoping Ted was here, so that I could kind of put him on notice to stay on top of the company if they come around, but he's not, so.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
What was your number on your rating for that company?
1.05 out of 5.
And 5 is the highest?
5 is the highest, yeah.
And you got an A-, that just doesn't make any sense.
Well, I know. I was expecting a D.
I don't understand that.
I know. But they've been in business.
Which one is which?
They've been in business 49 years, according to this. Their corporate offices are in Raleigh, North Carolina. So, if that's current, we're not dealing with a local company.
I don't know if the rating means anything, because both figures contradict.
You're right. And I found that surprising, but I, you know, I want to be transparent. I said everything that I saw. But I take the reviews over the rating, because they're all right down the same line. Terrible service. It's residential service, too, by the way, with picking up garbage and recyclables and stuff like that. Customer service. So, I throw that out there for whatever.
Yeah.
Hopefully, this sways you a smidge. I did see that they not only, you know, bought the, the divestiture, you know, occurred in this market, but they also acquired the vehicles and assumed the personnel of advanced here. So, hopefully, there'll be at least a transition period where your residents and the rest of our residents are served by the same folks. So, but we'll see. Be nice if there was a viable alternative, that we had a strong bidder in the next contract window. So, we'll see how that works out.
I think we did. But, you know, given the challenges on the extension when we did it, and again, we talked about water being quite the commodity, garbage and recycling is going to be very expensive going forward, too. Things have changed in that industry greatly and pushed prices up, you know, not just tipping fees, but recycling. And we experience that at our recycling yard on just what they used to pay us for, and now we got to pay to take it away. So, I just, I don't see where we really have a lot to go on here. For two years, we buy it out, and we'll be in negotiations in the next year on a future contract. And hopefully, as Ken said, maybe we'll have other bidders as well.
One last thing, Mayor. I mean, I don't think we have a, tonight, we don't have much of an option.
No. So, but good insight to hear, though, Steve. So. Anyone else? No. If no further questions from Melissa, motion on 13.
Gail will move to authorize the assignment of the current refuse and recycling contracts with Advanced Disposal to GFL Solid Midwest LLC, with all terms and conditions remain, and further authorizes the mayor to sign the August 19, 2020, letter from Advanced Disposal consenting to the agreement's transfer contingent upon closing.
Guskowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Now, we get to engineering. And item 14 is consideration of a motion to authorize engineering to enter into a three-party design contract with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, City of Oak Creek, and Ayers Associates for the design of West Drexel Avenue from 13th Street to Howell Avenue. And we have Mike Simmons with us to give us the details.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
Yep. Got you, Mike.
Okay, great. So, yes, this is the project that we've been talking about for several months now, the improvements for Drexel Avenue, from 13th Street to Howell Avenue. And just a quick recap, we had applied for federal funding for the project and did receive it earlier this year, which is an 80-20 split, 80% paid by federal money that is administered actually through the, through WISDOT here, State DOT. And so, what we're talking about here tonight is the design contract with Ayers Associates. We were approved a month ago, two meetings back, by the council, to enter into negotiations with Ayers to define, you know, finalize the scope, and then, of course, the compensation for that, for that design effort. And so, within that past month, we have worked with the DOT and with Ayers, hammering out the scope and the fee. And so, we're looking for approval from the council to go ahead and have that three-party agreement signed, and then we can turn Ayers loose on the design. The amount is $181,906.44. 80% of that would be paid by the grant money through the feds. That's $145,525. And the balance of 36... it became basically three lanes, which is an eastbound lane, a westbound lane, and then an eastbound to northbound left turn lane. And so basically, that really skinnied up what is available for parking as well on that approach, this area here. And, you know, we just took a call of someone that was concerned about, you know, the traffic movement through there, and, you know, as we looked at it closer, it became apparent that this would be a good idea, just to restrict the parking for this stretch of pavement. As we go further then to the west, the, you know, the turn lanes dissipate, and we're back to two wider lanes of traffic.
Thank you, Rich, was there any input on traffic?
Mike, thank you. Alderman Dukenyak, Third District, I am a member of the Traffic and Safety Committee. There was significant amount of discussion in regard to this, and we actually had the property owner at the west end join us in the meeting, and engaged in conversation, and that resident, you know, echoed her concerns with the safety of that area. I know, Mike, I had reached out to you to get any input, but it was a unanimous decision by the committee, and as Mike had mentioned, 10 years ago, that was a non-marked street to lane, with the addition of Lake Vista Parkway, you know, and concerns with additional parking attending events in that area, ended up having two lanes and a turn lane, and parking along that north strip of East American Avenue, and I guess the resident and both engineering had mentioned, it had become an unsafe area. And Mike, I don't know if you had had comments from residents in that area, but the committee did unanimously approve the no parking stretch, as described in the common council report, I believe it's 160-foot section leading from south Fifth Avenue, east on, excuse me, west on East American Avenue. But just, you know, around that corner, it has now become a very busy corner, so the addition of not having any park, or the, or by not having any parked cars there makes for a bit safer conditions in that area.
Thanks for supporting that, Rich, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was a unanimous vote by the committee.
Where's the railroad bridge on there, Mike?
So, yep, as you see over here on the west side of the graphic, that's Sixth Avenue, and then probably another 100 feet, 150 feet or so, and then there's the railroad.
Okay, I got you.
You know, that, we would love to get sidewalks along this stretch of road, to get people to the park, and to connect the residential neighborhoods closer to Shaggle Court and that, and Flint subdivision, and there's just a big challenge, and not the least of which is that railroad overpass. You'd hate to bring anybody under that, that overpass, it looks like it's, you know, that there's broken concrete.
Bad spot.
And it just narrows up, it's really going to be a challenge to get a sidewalk in there, but we do expect someday, we will be able to do that.
Thanks, Mike. And then, Rich, you want to touch on item B, the deaf child sign on Jonathan?
Sure, this was in Alderman Lorick's district, and this was brought to the attention of the Traffic and Safety Committee by the resident, whose child is a deaf child. And the unique thing about this was, this is a bit older, I believe he's a student at Oak Creek High School, and does travel quite frequently by bike. So you see this very healthy young man perusing about the area, and people don't understand the disability that he has, and especially because he's easily able to communicate with you, he talks very well. The resident had shared with us that there have been several instances where his son is along either side of the road, and it's a narrow roadway, and residents are blasting their horn at the kid, being behind him, thinking, why aren't you moving? So certainly, people would get aggravated, why isn't this kid listening to my, you know, honk of safety here? And then, because he's not responding to the honk of the horn because of his disability, they take less than safe action by going around that young man and cutting them directly in front of him. So, the committee did not see a big issue with having the deaf child sign areas. The location of the resident is that 2040 West Jonathan Drive, so it's at both points, west and northeast of the residence, and the sign is then, you know, facing each way of traffic, just to alert people of a child with disabilities, specifically a deaf child in that area. The resident was also nice enough to make us aware that it would probably be a, just a limited amount of time that that signage would be necessary, his son will be moving on to college in a couple of years, they're anticipating won't be home for a few years, and, you know, he will, he will then make the committee or Streets Department aware of when his son no longer resides in that area, and we can consider removal of those signs. This was a unanimous decision by the Traffic and Safety Committee as well.
Sounds like a wise one.
Yeah. I get, am I misunderstanding, it said the commission did not propose the proposed installation, is that on the bottom of, my misunderstanding that?
The commission did support the proposed installation of the deaf, of the deaf child sign area.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, there's no further questions, comments? Oh, Greg, I'm sorry.
Just one quick, go ahead. Just one quick comment, thanks for considering that. My house is actually in that picture, so I'm well aware of that corner.
Oh, okay.
I get lots of complaints on the corner. I did have two residents stop me on a walk, two separate incidents, questioning who even applied for this. I politely said it's not really our business, and it's probably covered by HIPAA, but it actually sounds like it might not be, if it's a public hearing and they come to speak. So I was just curious on the, I guess, the process of doing this, and you explained that, so thank you for that. But again, definitely a corner where it's needed, it is kind of a blind corner, and people really whip around that corner there, so thank you.
Interestingly, years ago in that subdivision, another block down from Apple Creek, we put similar signs on one of the roads, too, and I was an alderman there, we had a situation.
Yeah, I think I've seen deaf child signs throughout the community, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's good, it's a good alert for aldermen, so. If no other comments, questions, motion on 15A and B, please.
So, do I make the A and B separately, or can that be combined?
I think it can be combined.
Okay, so Dukenyak moved to approve with the Traffic and Safety Commission, to concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission, and approve the installation of A, a no parking anytime sign on the north side of East American Avenue from south Fifth Avenue to 150 feet west of south Fifth Avenue, that's in the Fourth District, and B to put up deaf child area signs on west Jonathan Drive in the Second District.
Oracle Second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 16 is the License Committee, I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the common council report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? Seeing none, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the October 6th, no, it should be October 20th, I'm sorry, right? October 20th License Committee Report. I'm sorry, I was going by the agenda, and the report was a little different, so it's October 20, 2020.
Dukenyak Second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 17 is our vendor summary report, for dated October 14, 2020. Everybody, please take a look, and any questions, we will answer directly if we can.
Alderman Dukenyak in the Third District, I just have one question, and it would have been for Ted, I don't know if anyone knows this, this is on item number five in regard to the Gerber Leisure Products for the Parks and Playground Equipment. Has that equipment been installed, does anyone know? I know, I did ride by Riverton Meadows a couple of weeks ago, and the site was being prepared, and I was just wondering, not yet?
Not sure.
They may go end of season, and then, given the conditions of the safer-at-home, things may have been backed up, too, material might have been, I don't know for fact they're not in, but a lot of things are delayed right now.
Okay.
And Parks and Rec has not met for a while.
Well, you're correct, so.
I couldn't fill you in from their, their rich site.
Just wondering, thank you.
Are there any other questions concerning the vendor summary?
Clerk moves to approve the October 14, 2020, vendor summary report in total amount of
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Okay, before we adjourn, Catherine, I don't mean to put you on the spot, would you like to do a reminder about early voting, please?
Certainly, Mayor, so, early voting has started for the City of Oak Creek and the State of Wisconsin. We will be here through the end of the week, 8 to 4. We will be here on Saturday, the 24th, from 8 o'clock to 3 p.m. And then all next week, Monday through Friday. Please remember to bring a photo ID with you if you choose to come and cast your ballot early here at City Hall. Everyone in the city votes at City Hall early for voting, and then for the election on November 3rd, all six district polling locations will be open from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Great, and you mentioned the Dropbox also is an option?
Yep, certainly, if you have received an absentee ballot by mail, or if you are to receive one, you can return it to City Hall during business hours or 24 hours a day at our outside Dropbox on the southwest side of the building.
Thank you, Catherine.
Welcome.
Want to thank our staff, great job tonight, Kevin, IT guy, always doing a good job, I know we're stretching you thin, but you're doing great. With that, adjournment, and Steve, you got something?
Yeah, just want to give a shout out to Catherine, we all know over 9,000 absentee ballots have were mailed out, so that's a, that's a lot of work on her department. And Mayor, you want to talk about the Fall Festival?
Um, yes, we are going to celebrate the end of the season for a successful farmer's market, and the Fall Fest won't be the Fall Fest that we normally have, but we will be doing a Fall Fest for those that choose it as strictly a voluntary event. So again, please, if you are going to participate, please follow the suggested guidelines of social distancing, masks, take the appropriate protections to protect not only yourselves but others.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thanks for the reminder, Steve.
Kirkowski, make a motion to adjourn. Dukenyak will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
All right, thank you all, have a good night.